Okay, good evening, everybody. We're going to get going with tonight's public forum. My name is Chris Pia. I'm calling to order the regularly scheduled public forum for Monday, January 10th, 2022, for the town of Stratford. I'm the town council chair. And Ms. Paquette, council clerk, has brought me the list. For a reminder for those who have been here and done this, and for anybody who is new, the way we run the public forum is when I call your name, just come up to the podium. If you could state your name, your address for the record, and please keep your comments to the three minutes allowed per person, and we'll go from there. I'm going to go in order as it was written down. First gentleman signed up, Mr. State Rep. Gresko.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, council members. Joe Gresko, 284 Mary Avenue. I realize the town council has already voted to approve the tennis court upgrade at Longbrook Park, but I'm asking for a design reconsideration on account of the tree loss. I apologize for coming in the last minute after the macaroni's cooked, so to speak, having served in your capacity and on other boards and commissions. There's nothing worse than somebody running with their hair on fire, well, so to speak, again, objecting in the final hour when there was opportunities to make points during the process. But these old growth trees are worth considering a redesign, possibly closer to the road, for example. Having played in town tennis tournaments many years ago when I was younger and faster and thinner and all that good stuff, I support the upgraded recreational opportunities, but these trees are exactly what the town needs and what the town requested, having been here before any of us were born. I refer to an item on your agenda this evening, accepting DEEP's grant for tree planting in Stratford. Kelly Kerrigan and Greg Riley worked hard on the application, and it doesn't hurt to have the House Chair of the Environment Committee make sure the town gets the maximum amount. But it's ironic, maybe even counterintuitive, to take down these majestic oaks and maples and then ask for state money for new trees. We've all seen utility companies removing the trees along our streets and not replacing them. I understand most were in need of severe trimming or removal, or they were in the wrong spot, and we've had major power outages. Right tree in the right place is the phrase, and Longbrook Park fits that right place. These iconic trees are cleaning our air and water on a large scale now. Let's let them continue to service us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gresko. Next, I have signed up Ms. Palermo.
Linda Palermo, 46th Watt Place. Good evening. I have two issues I'm going to touch on. One is I would like the council to know I have filed a complaint with the Lieutenant Governor regarding Stony Brook Co-op in Corfert. It's a rather thick file. It will be faxed up to his office so they could look at some of the improprieties that they are doing in Stony Brook and have been ongoing for years. My second issue is, as you are well aware, several years ago, I fell on town property, and I broke my foot. The attorney who looked at the file, they wanted to do a motion to dismiss, but I wouldn't happen because I withdrew the case. But within that, I had said some of my experience were with our town attorney. The judge said, "File the grievance." So I've come to the conclusion, since we have two town attorneys that feel that they don't have to pay the claim, I feel I'm being robbed of my money that I should be getting as a result of the injury that happened on town property. I will be going forward with filing a grievance against them. I am seeking that they pay me the $20,000, the $40,000 I asked for. My case is well proven. All the evidence has been turned in. So I'm letting the council know that grievance will go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Next on this, next signed up is, I believe, Ms. Lee. Did I get it correctly? Did I pronounce it correct, ma'am?
Yes, it's Marka Lee.
Marka Lee, go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, good to meet you. I'm going to, I might go about a half a minute over, but I'll try not to.
If you could just state your name and address for the record, and try to keep it to the three minutes, please.
Marka Lee, 1661 Elm Street in Stratford, Connecticut. Regarding the Longbrook Park trees and new tennis courts, I went reading through the minutes regarding the tennis courts and tree removal, and finally found some information in June, July of the 2021 minutes of both the Longbrook Park Committee and the Parks and Recreation Committee. What I read under the Longbrook Parks Committee regarding the tennis courts is that a plan was made, a timeline was approved, and a draft copy was made for commission's review. I didn't know what that plan entailed, and I didn't see that draft copy. So then I went to the Parks and Rec minutes and found what I believe to be the plan that is referred to, ending with a sentence that reads, "An 8-24 review must be submitted and approved for the Planning and Zoning Commission's order to be passed." So I then looked under the Planning Commission and found that the town attorney stated the 8-24 review was not needed because it was only for renovation of an existing structure, meaning the existing tennis courts, and I didn't see anything about the new courts or the tree removal. So I was a little confused because I was going back and forth through the minutes, and I could only find things about the existing tennis courts and nothing about removal of trees or new tennis courts. So had I been privy to that information, and many people have been wondering about the information as well, about the removal of these healthy adult trees, I would have opposed the plan, and I would have said this. Because of this decision, these native adult trees will no longer be absorbing carbon from the air. I did some math. Forty-eight pounds of carbon is absorbed per adult tree per year, making the decision to cut down these trees allowing 384 pounds of carbon dioxide back into our atmosphere per year. Additionally, one tree, an adult tree, provides one day supply of oxygen to four people. So because of this decision to remove these trees, we'll now fall 32 people short of the oxygen that these parks trees are currently providing. Oak trees are one of the most valuable trees to wildlife in our area. They provide homes to wildlife that are struggling in an ever-shrinking natural world. Squirrels, songbirds, birds of prey, owls, hawks, raccoons, you get the idea. Also, without exaggeration, literally hundreds of Lepidoptera, meaning butterflies and moths, and countless other pollinators. The decision to move these trees will mean the end of entire ecosystems, entire worlds that exist that humans always don't, always don't get to see. Animals who lose their homes in as cold as time of year will die without shelter, as it's too late for them to build new homes, and then they won't be able to build new nests in the spring, all due to this decision to end these adult trees. New plantings are great in the long run, but they'll never be able to replace the loss of life that will occur right now, and they won't have the positive impact that these adult trees have on our environment, at least for another 20 years. And even then, that's if they survive and if they're not chopped down in the future. Lastly, trees don't overgrow. That's a fallacy. I wish I could say more, but my time is up. I oppose the removal of any healthy tree in the future and at Longbrook Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. I believe, Ms. Lee, just for clarification, when you'd signed up, did you make a note below just for pronunciation purposes?
I did.
Okay, I just want to make sure it wasn't somebody else. Thank you. Next person signed up on the list is Mr. Fuller.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council, fellow Stratford residents, David Fuller, 48 Sunny Bay Avenue, here in Stratford. I'm going to actually sound unpopular tonight. I actually support the town's due diligence in the Longbrook Park tennis courts for a couple of reasons. If you refer back to the June 2nd meetings, it was passed unanimously in a bipartisan manner by both Longbrook Parks Commission and Parks and Rec. Apparently, it doesn't need an 8-24 review since it's a modification of an existing structure, too. Being a former zoning commissioner, I can say that legal opinion is appropriate and consistent. Why do I support the plan? What made me come around and support the plan is the fact that the trees are actually going to be replaced. Any good farm, any good lumber company, any good utility company, and frankly, the state should probably legislate that utility companies replace the trees they cut down. And the town's doing that in this situation. I just recommend that, you know, plant more than eight trees. You're actually going to make it stronger than what it was before. But the other reason why I'm supporting this is that Stratford High is finally going to have a tennis court of its own. It's going to be its home. Any sort of improvements we can make to recreational facilities and parks enhances the property value. There's going to be a return of investment. The homes in that immediate area are going to gain value just because the park is more vibrant. People go there. My grandmother lived right next to Benel, and I could tell you this much, the tennis court is much more used than the track and field oval down there. It's popular. Tennis is a very popular sport. I should probably play it myself. I'd probably lose a couple pounds if I did. But I just want to say the town is doing due diligence. I do appreciate the fact that trees are going to get planted there, and also just the recreational and fitness benefits from this, too, also benefit the town. Thank you again for your service, and many thanks for allowing public forum tonight, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller. Next up, Mitzi. You're up, Mitzi. Yep, take your time.
I'll get there.
No worries. We'll start the clock when you get there.
Mitzi Antezo, 367 Windsor Avenue. Can you hear me through my mask? I'm not a tennis player, obviously, but a friend of mine and I toured the town to look at the tennis courts. The tennis court that used to be at Worcester has been paved with cement, and the rundown courts that were down at Short Beach have also been just paved with cement. Her question, and by the way, she always says to me, "Why do I have to go to Trumbull to play tennis?" But anyway, my question on, her question is, "What are the plans for those cemented X courts?" I'm not here to protest the taking down of trees, by the way. I live on, at Paradise Green. It was developed in the 1920s, and a lot of the remaining trees with big holes cut in the middle so the wires could go through are about 100 years old. Those trees are much too old. They should have been taken down 50 years ago and replanted, and that's my question. I look back on the 2020 and the 2021 budget. There was $30,000 allocated to removal and replacement of trees. And my question is, where did they replace the trees? If somebody could get the answer to that, I would be very happy. Because if you go to the green, for instance, Woodstock Avenue, the first block has no trees. One of my sons that hasn't been in the area for a while came through the other day, and he said to me, "Where are all the trees?" Because he's in his 60s, and he remembers when he was a kid, the green was lush with trees. Now, I'm very glad to see that the government is going to provide some, a grant to replant, but I noticed that the replanting is done, not at the green at all. And one other thing I want to mention about the trees, when the phone, no, I think it was the phone company, I'm not sure, maybe the electric company, came through from Paradise Green Park up to Connor's Lane, on one side of Huntington Road, I counted 18 trees taken down, none replaced, to my knowledge. And I think, given the
If you could wrap
climate help
If you could wrap up
that you have now, which is, you know, takes supplies oxygen, not only that, the shade lowers the temperature of the homes if you have enough shade trees around. So did that bell ring?
Yes, it did.
Okay.
I gave you a couple of extra seconds.
Thank you very much.
No problem, Mitzi. Thank you. Take your time. Okay. Next person signed up, I have Paula Sweeney.
Good evening. I'm Paula Sweeney. I live in, on Short Beach Road. And my request going into the future is that there be a more friendly relationship between the citizens and our representatives in government. When I attempt to communicate with various of our government representatives, I never get a recognition or a reply to my emails, and I don't do it very often, unless and less, because if you're not going to even be recognized, why should you bother to say anything? I find it very discouraging. And I think in our community, we have people with vast knowledge in a lot of different areas, and their opinions should be welcomed, not discouraged, like the lady who just spoke. I mean, she's been around for a long time and seen a lot, and she can speak to that. So even if we could have, we also need to be clued in to potential situations involving our ecology, which I think all of us are very much concerned about. Because trying to follow along in all the different places, the committees, commissions, and all those things, that's very, very daunting for someone who isn't actually a member of the committee, the commission. The language sometimes is very, very technical. So if we could just know when something like this is coming up, and then give people a chance to speak, if it's an open hearing or whatever, I'm now pretty much feeling like I don't matter, that the government just goes on, and I'm not important. So that's pretty much what I have to say. I thank you all for your service. Something I couldn't do, I tell you, I could not sit in meetings and go through all this. I'm glad some people are willing to do it, but that's just my request. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And lastly, I have Lisa Zawatski. Did I pronounce it correctly, ma'am?
You did.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, everybody. Lisa Zawatski, 44 Elliott Street. I am requesting that the tennis court plans for Longbrook Park be reevaluated to eliminate or reduce the number of trees slated for removal. Oak trees are especially beneficial to our ecosystem. Acorns are a food source for many animals, and the oak trees support 897 caterpillar species. These caterpillars are necessary food for hundreds of birds to feed their young. A recent study showed a $3 billion reduction in the number of songbirds in the United States, in part because of tree elimination. Pesticide use and light pollution are also contributing factors. The roots from these established trees and the leaf debris help with water runoff, and our town has many flooding issues to be addressed. Removing large trees may create a flooding problem where one doesn't currently exist. The shade canopy is also important. The new trees won't provide the same canopy within our lifetime of anybody in this room. Our town has lost many thousands of trees on private land in the past few months. This is an impact, this has an impact on the wildlife all around us. The town has the ability to save trees in its parks and reevaluate the location of the proposed tennis courts. I feel it is important to have outdoor activities in town, and I welcome new and maintained courts. As previously mentioned, the courts in town have been in disrepair for a long time. I'm not saying I want Longbrook Park to become a nature preserve. I would like to see a bike path to Lordship so I don't have to drive there, and that might mean tree removal and additional pavement. These are amenities that would benefit our community, but there has to be a better balance than what we're being presented with. As a town, let's try harder to live up to the name, from forest to shore. Let's add native trees to parks and not remove them. Let's get Stratford on the pollinator pathway, but that's a conversation for another day. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody who's present who has, who would like the opportunity to sign up, who has not? Again, last call. Anybody here who would like to sign up, who did not have the opportunity? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to call the public forum closed at 7:21 PM, and we'll reconvene at 8:00 PM sharp right here for the town council meeting. Good evening, everybody. My name is Chris Pia. I'm calling to, I'm calling tonight's regularly scheduled meeting of the town of Stratford Town Council to order. Today is January 10th, 2022, and it is 8:00 PM. The first item on the agenda is the invocation and pledge, and I'd like to ask, start in the 10th district, and we'll go around this year, starting with Councilwoman Danchow to lead us.
Dear God, as we gather here tonight, may you show, shower your blessings upon each of us and prepare our hearts as we conduct our work. Lord, help us to be a blessing in the way we speak and act. Let our actions be in alignment with your word, and may we speak with humility when presenting our ideas. Open up our hearts and minds that we may know the hope to which you have called us. Give us boldness to speak what you have placed in our hearts, and help us to follow your will. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First item in the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the special meeting of December 13th, 2021. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
Ms. Danchow?
Second.
Seconded by Councilor O'Brien. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes 9-0. No ceremonial presentation or awards this evening. We have three notifications of resignation for informational purposes only. Those who are included, everybody in the pony. The next item is going to be the mayor's report. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. As the first meeting of the year, I'd like to wish you all happy, Happy New Year, happy, healthy, prosperous year in 2022 for us all. Martin Luther King Day is coming up, and there's some upcoming events being held in honor of Martin Luther King Jr. Day that I'll mention later in my report. Regarding COVID, our townwide vaccination rate is 75.39% for one dose, which is 39,090 people. Those who are vaccinated, fully vaccinated, are 68.58%, 35,559 people. The CDC and DPH still defines fully vaccinated as completed their primary series. Boosted data is not yet available. Our case rate is 250, almost 254 per 100,000. Weekly COVID vaccine at Bird's Eye Complex, offering Moderna and J&amp;J for adults. The first one will be January 12th. They continue to arrange for and advertise the Griffin Health Mobile Vaccine Team in various locations throughout town. Some of the clinics planned include January 22nd at Sterling House, January 24th at the Baldwin Center. That's 12-plus aged for Pfizer, 18-plus for Moderna and J&amp;J. On January 26th, Bird's Eye will be 18-years-old and older for Moderna and J&amp;J. The home-on vaccination program partnering with Stratford EMS and Stratford VNA continues to do well, and our health department also continues with contact tracing. We'd like to thank the Hearts for Hope, who made such wonderful handmade heart-shaped ornaments to honor the health department's staff and volunteers in recognition of our service during this COVID response time. In other news, the health department is partnering with DPH on a HEPC project that looks at alternative ways to get people tested and then rapidly linking them to care. The health department is also hosting with economic development, hosting Raymar Community Services Advisory Group meetings and keeping the website updated with data. In recent events, we had the menorah lighting, which is part of the Celebrate Series, and was held on December 2nd at sundown at town hall, for those who have not witnessed Rabbi Stock and his large traveling menorah, which is ignited with road flares. It's always amazing event, and we are proud here to host in Stratford, and we are pleased that the attendance grows every year. The annual tree lighting event was held at town hall on December 7th at 5:30. It was a joy to share the spirit with the singing of carols, the lighting of the trees, and our special visit from Santa and Mrs. Claus. Special thanks to our fire department for serving as Rudolph and the Sleigh. A special thanks also goes to Athletic Brewing, who sponsored the Celebrate Stratford event. Broadway on Barnum danced their performances, Nichols School Choir and the Stratford High School Choir also sang, and Pop Party Collective for adorning the hall, town hall with such amazing balloon sculptures for the event. It's no surprise that there's a tremendous spirit of giving here in Stratford during the holidays, and with some efforts to make the season a little better for those in need, I think these are worthy for a mention. The Police Activities League had their most successful toy drive yet, serving 500 families this year versus the 175 families in the previous year. A lot of effort goes into this, and the last two years because of the COVID pandemic, thousands of these toys were delivered by Santa Claus, aka Larry Chicorelli, and his escort of police cars. I want to thank everyone who generously donated gifts this year, as well as the many, many volunteers who planned and executed the wrapping and the gifts and the deliveries. The Stratford EMS partnered once again with Sterling House Community Center to drive Santa Claus, also Larry Chicorelli. He has his own costume that fits very well in it, to deliver the presents collected by Sterling House for the successful annual toy drive. The Beautification Committee had their holiday decorating awards, and the winners are first place, 781 Wiggleon Lane. Second place was 30 Ross Drive. Third place was 5825 Main Street, and over the top was 101 Evergreen Drive. This year, the committee has awarded a Lifetime Achievement Award to Figler's Farm on Wigwam Lane for their annual dazzling displays. The winners also received a lawn sign indicating their awards, thanks to all who participated. The town of Stratford graduated four town officials from the Certified Connecticut Municipality Official Certification Program, established by the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. The certificates were awarded during the CCM's annual convention, which was held earlier last, in December. Stratford's graduates include CEO Chris Timniak, Executive Assistant Ricky Williams, Stratford EMS Director Mike Louise, and myself. It was a tremendous honor to participate in the presentation of four Quilts of Valor to four distinguished World War II veterans from Stratford yesterday, from Stratford, in a brief ceremony on December 8th. The four World War II veterans honored are Charles Bonowski, who also was a former town employee, retired, Army Air Corps, Roy Friedman, U.S. Navy, James Morgia, U.S. Army, and James Burge, U.S. Navy. The ceremony organized by the Stratford Veterans Museum brought Connecticut State Coordinator Jane Doherty of Quilts of Valor for the presentation. The Quilts of Valor organization provided quality handmade quilts to award service members or veterans touched by war, thanking them for their service and sacrifice. Many of you are aware that at the last meeting of the Sikorsky Airport Commission, the city of Bridgeport passed a measure to change the name of Igori Sikorsky Memorial Airport. The airport, which is situated within the boundaries of Stratford, has been owned and operated by the city of Bridgeport since 1937. Bridgeport has now designated it the Bridgeport Sikorsky Memorial Airport, in an effort to rebrand as they prepare to engage in an agreement with the Connecticut Airport Authority to run the airport. I oppose the change of the name I oppose the change of the name as I feel diminishes the honor given to Igori Sikorsky in recognition of his legacy, which is so important to Stratford and our region. As Mayor of Stratford, I also have a seat on the airport and one vote on the Airport Commission. However, Bridgeport holds all the other seats. I want to thank the many residents who reached out to us over the last month in an effort to stop the name change and support the important legacy of Igori Sikorsky, something which Stratford will continue to hold dear and honor. Upcoming events, on the events honoring Martin Luther King Jr. Day, the Town of Stratford brings back Digital Dreams refurbishing program. The Stratford Strong Task Force, in collaboration with my office, is reinstating Digital Dreams and a program that will provide refurbished computers, tablets, and smartphones to residents in need. The Digital Dreams Device Collection Event is scheduled as a service project to honor Martin Luther King Jr. Day. As a result of the 2021 device drive, 50 new iPads were distributed to members of the Stratford senior community, along with technical training to familiarize recipients with their new iPad. The town hopes to serve more folks this year, as the collection has expanded to three days compared to one day last year. This is a drive-through event. Participants are encouraged to remain in their vehicle. The collection will take place in the parking lot of the Baldwin Center, 1,000 East Broad Street, sorry, 1,000 West Broad Street, at the, at the following times. Friday, the 14th, 4:30 to 3:30 PM. Saturday, the 15th, from 10 to 2:00 PM, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and Monday, January 17th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The following items are accepted: desktop computers, including any flat panel displays, laptop computers, tablets, with the exception of Amazon devices such as Kindles, smartphones, with the exception of iPhones that are iCloud locked, or any flip phone. Paul wishes still, he still had a flip phone, by the way. A certificate confirming that all the devices have been professionally cleaned and erased will be provided via email to anyone donating an item. The program is in joint effort with the Digital Dreams Project, a nationwide initiative that restores used devices, which are in turn redistributed back to the community. If you have any, would like to get any more information, please contact stratfordstrong@townofstratford.com. The annual Economic Service honoring Dr. Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. will take place on Sunday, January 16th, at 3:00 PM at the First Baptist Church of Stratford. Masks are required at this event if you attend in person, but the event will also be livestreamed. Sterling House Community Center will once again hold its MLK Day on January 17th. You can register online for interesting and informative workshops, as well as their service opportunities on their website. The Christmas Tree Collection started on January 4th, and the Parks Division started the tree pickup. The service will last through January 31st. All residents should place the discarded trees on their planting strip by the road, where it can be seen and picked up easily. The trees should be empty with no ornaments or plastic covering. The Economic Development Department reports that the Army Engine Plant is being worked on by multiple town departments to continue and assist the developers with advice, historical information, and additional resources on the projects that must be completed prior to and immediately following the closing. And these include the tripartee agreement, Outfall Eight remediation, flood control, sewers, and utilities. The two finalists, two finalists for the development of Center School are waiting to present to the town council at a special meeting. Contract plating is currently being marketed and has several interested parties. The Raymark Cleanup Schedule excavation is as follows. On January 12th, there will be a virtual public meeting that will be held regarding the excavation of Raymark waste behind Blue Goose, which is on Ferry Boulevard, and this will start on January 24th and continue through late March, early April. Early April through June, excavation will happen at Beacon Point, across the water from the water treatment plant and behind Hyde Harbor, the residential community. In August, June and August, the Hitchcock Marina property will be excavated, and in the fall, Ferry Creek Corridor. In 2023, the businesses Whiz Blazers and Rotary Ski Shop on the right-hand side of Ferry Boulevard going towards Milford will be remediated, and in 2024, the cap will be completed at the ball field. We have some new businesses that have come to Stratford, Reader's Block Bookstore at Colonial Plaza, Ada's Beauty Bar on Main Street, 3355 Main Street, ATAX Tax Service, which is 1345 Barnum Avenue, and there was a sale of Spring Village to BFG for almost $20 million. The conveyance of it was a little short of $50,000. The Economic and Community Development Commission issued a text amendment application to the zoning commission, who voted to approve with conditions, the text amendment at the public hearing on December 8th. Any live or recorded music or entertainment inside or outside a commercial establishment may be permitted, subject to strict compliance with the Town of Stratford's noise ordinance. The new permit will include the following conditions set by the zoning commission. The permit is required, and guidelines are included in the permit. The applicant must permit, must include in permit two contact numbers and for the noise complaints. Each permit shall be valid for one year, expiring December 31st of each year, regardless of when the applicant receives the permit. Live entertainment is limited to the lot in which the commercial establishment is physically located, and failure to comply with the cause will cause, be a cause for revocation of the permit. The zoning administrator has created a new permit in Viewpoint, which, which is on our online permitting system, which will go through all the applicable departments. The Economic and Community Development Department will do outreach during the month of January to commercial establishments wishing to provide live entertainment. We had several ribbon cuttings in, on the 19th of November, exit 33, the northbound entrance to I-95, and Fish Bar de Milan at Station House Square. On December 15th, we welcomed the relocation of Ash Creek Enterprises as they moved and consolidated at 99 Orin Oak Lane. I think you have my last page.
Me?
Okay, you didn't take it?
No.
No, I'm sorry, I have it. So in truth, we are finalizing the celebrate events for 2022 with calendars and sponsorships. We had a shop small campaign on November 26th, coordinated this annual campaign in partnership with Howard Aspenwell, owner of Melo Monkey. And the Stratford Community Calendar, which is a partnership between the Town of Stratford and Sterling House Community Center, is now online, and it's a resource available to the town to sponsor events, and is available for anyone's use. I'd like to make the following appointments to town attorney. I'd like to appoint Chris Hodgson for the Booth Park Commission. The existing commissioners, Maureen Millward, Richard Brown, Andrea Kamakami, Anna Scala, Bustacilio, Anne Minton, Ray Vacola, with the council appointments being Jim Connor and Caitlin Shake. The alternate members are Frank Keckow, Paul DeVito, Adam Hosa, and Elliot Severn. The Economic Development Mission, Commission, the reappointment of James Benson, Frank Bavacqua, Mark Calzone, Brian Oliver, Jennifer Sheldon, Colin Kennedy, and a new appointment of Joseph McKnight, with town council appointments being Chris Pia and Greg Can. Community Development Block Grant Subcommittee of the Economic and Community Development Commission would be Jason Santi, David Harden, Casimir Rosira, Kimberly Rice, and Lizette Francesi. Francesi. The Ethics Commission, the reappointment of Thomas Koalik, the appointment of Joseph Adetombe replacing Dave Mulane, and Charles Lindberg moving from the alternate member to fill the vacancy of Patricia Gallagher. The Historic District Commission, alternates Teresa Sheehy filling the vacancy for Michael Bingham, Megan Booth filling the vacancy for Darrell Brock. Longbrook Park Commission's reappointments of Martha Boddington, James McGuire, Roger Sauls, and appointing Nancy Russo filling the vacancy of Amy Wulsey, with the new council appointment being Laura Dancho, since the charter calls for the second district council person and the seventh district council person to be members. The Roosevelt Forest Commission, I'd like to appoint Nancy Nightengale to fill the vacancy for Elaine Watson, and also Bill O'Brien, who is the ninth district councilman for that, for the charter. And that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Opening up for questions for the mayor to the council. Anybody?
Thank you, Chris. Two questions, one on behalf of Kim Rice, who is, could not be with us tonight. Madam Mayor, Kim expressed an interest in obtaining a list of all the grants that the town's departments has applied for, and sort of, let's call it an inventory. Is that a report that could be shared with the town council?
Yes, we're happy to do that.
And for myself, on the agenda in prior months, we had the financial tan report. Could you summarize its purpose and why we no longer, well, it's not on this month's agenda?
So the tax anticipation note was set up before we knew how we were going to come out of COVID, and if we were going to have to, in essence, avail ourselves of borrow any money to keep our cash flow positive. The finance director is here. If you'd like her to give you more information for the 12 months that we had, actually, it was more than 12 months, we never availed ourselves of that resource, and so it was decided by the council chairman that the report was no longer necessary.
Any other questions for the mayor? Yes, Lizette.
Good evening, Mayor. How are you? Happy New Years, and thank you for this opportunity to be sitting in the chair today. I just have one question. In addition to planting trees in the South End and West End, do we have any idea to which location of the South End, their district, will trees be planted as it does not state on the minutes today? Thank you.
Happy New Year to you, too. It's nice to have you here. You mean on the agenda where it's at Seymour Street and those? So I don't, I don't know if Kelly is here today. Oh, there she is. So we have plans to also apply for other urban forest grants. This was the first one. Congratulations, by the way, Kelly and Greg, for applying and getting this, this grant award. Linger trees is nothing to laugh about, but we also have the tree replacement program that we've been actively working with Stratford residents. So there could be more. Juliet Low is a park that's in your district. There is significant work that's going, has been done and will continue to be done. That might be another place to plant some trees, but it's something that we can work with you on. You're welcome.
Any other questions for the mayor? Just one quick question. The snowstorm the other night, I, I didn't receive any complaints from constituents. Overall, Public Works, no major issues, just from a breakdown of apparatus or anything like that overall. It was pretty good, right?
We did have some breakdown of apparatus, and, and we did have calls from residents, but I'm really pleased to report that when people called Public Works, they were responded to professionally and quickly, and within the next 24 hours, everything was, was taken care of. Always, that's a difficulty, and Public Works isn't really here, but PD is here. The alternate side of the streets parking is problematic every single year. There's, it depends on the day of the storm, if we can ask people to park in the school lots, but that's a little bit of an issue every year. But the, but Public Works and the police are generally very sensitive to people's ability to have, find someplace else to park, so they work with everyone very closely rather than towing cars.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any other questions? Okay, we'll go on to the town attorney's report. Mr. Town Attorney Hodgson.
Thank you, Chair. This is a report from November and December. The town recovered $6,720 in damage to a police vehicle and to the Connors Farm fence. The town settled a claim for a sewer line installation area, paying out $2,900. We've opened up new liability claims for damage to police vehicles. We have also opened up claims relative to damage caused by EMS, police sanitation truck, and EMS vehicle. We have 26 workers comp claims filed in this two-month period. We opened up two blight files. We recovered $3,000 approximately in blight liens, and we have five FOI requests. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney, Town Attorney. Next item on the agenda under resolutions is going to be item 6.2.1. I'll entertain a motion. I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Connor.
Sorry. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a resolution regarding Connecticut State Opid Response Initiative Community Grant. I'd like to make a motion to approve that.
Motion made by Councilman Connor. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. O'Brien. Any discussion on this? As always, for all ponies, all the grant summaries are included in the pony for all the councilors with great descriptions. Again, to all Tammy and to Mr. Riley and everybody who works on the grants, we appreciate it every month as it's town, on behalf of the town council. Any other further discussion on this item? Nope. Call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda is item 6.2.2.
Mr. Chairman.
Dancho.
I'd like to make a motion to accept a resolution regarding the 2021 Assistance to Firefighters Grant administered through the Federal Emergency Management Agency for acquisition of a new pumper fire engine in the amount of $750,000.
Thank you, Ms. Dancho. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Shake. Any discussion on the item? Nope. It's a great, great grant. Thank you to everybody who work, and to Chief Jermaine. Appreciate it. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda is going to be item 6.2.3. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Dancho.
I'd like to make a motion to accept a resolution regarding a 2021 Assistance to Firefighters Grant administered through Federal Emergency Management Agency for attending live fire training and acquiring rescue equipment. This would be in the amount of $131,040, with requiring a town match of $13,104.
I'll second that. Okay, thank you, Ms. Dancho. I have a second by Councilor Poissons. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda is going to be item 6.2.4. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Chairman, I'd like to make a resolution. I would like to make a motion to make a resolution regarding 2022 Federal Justice Assistance Formula Grant Program, Violent Crime Prevention administered through CT Office of Policy and Management.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
I have a second. Motion made by Ms. Sutton. I have a second by Councilman Connor. Any discussion on this item? No discussion. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda is going to be item 6.2.5. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Dancho.
I motion to accept a resolution regarding Connecticut Urban Forest Council's Urban Forestry Climate Change Grants Program for Town Streets Free Tree Replanting Program in the amount of $37,000.
Thank you, Ms. Dancho. Do I have a second to the motion? Seconded by Mr. Councilor O'Brien. Any discussion on this? Just can.
Thank you, Chris. To the Chair, can I ask a couple of questions, maybe of Kelly?
Pertaining specifically to this motion?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Ms. Kerrigan? Hi, Kelly.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Can.
Hi, Kelly. Thanks for your work on conservation and everything that pertains. First question is a map of the potential tree plantings. Do you have like a schematic on the preliminary where you, we may intend to plant all these trees?
Right, so under this grant, my plan is to host two community meetings, one in each of the designated planting areas, so roughly the West End and the South End, and then to have approximately 50 trees planted in each of those two areas. And because there are street trees located adjacent to private residences, my hope was that- that during these community meetings, we could form good partnerships with those folks where we'll be planting those trees to help encourage their growth. So, that, that's the rough plan, but my, my hope is that during those community meetings, we'll hash out a lot of those details.
And a second question is, you know, Oda Street is an area that had a number of dead trees, which is a great possibility for replanting. Before we would plant a tree, would we note why the trees that were already there may have not survived?
Without going into details on every specific tree, I mean, a lot of our street trees are constrained within pretty urban environments, so a lot of them do struggle because of poor soil conditions or atmospheric conditions, in addition to things like car accidents and things of that nature. So, I don't have specifics on each individual tree, but if we did want to talk about that, I'd be happy to.
Thank you, Kelly.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion on this item? Nope. Seeing none. Thank you very much, Kelly. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda is item 6.2.6. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Brien.
6.2.6, I move the resolution regarding solar photovoltaic, oh, boy, what's that word? Photovoltaic panel array, Stratford High School.
I'll second that. Good job, Bill. I have a second by Councilor Poissons. Any discussion on this? Actually, Mr. Timniak, if you could just come up, and I was gonna, I know there might be a question on this, if you could just explain why we have this on tonight's. Thank you. It might answer your question, Greg.
Good evening, everyone. This is back in front of the council through a correction of language. I think Attorney Leclerc was dealing with the state of Connecticut, and so was Dawn. In order for the state to accept the, in order for us to get the state reimbursement and accept the project, it needed to have specific language in the first resolution we passed, which this, which it didn't have. So, this makes that correction. They wanted to see it reflective in the minutes, is basically the nut story in a nutshell. I'm happy to answer any questions, or maybe Attorney Leclerc, if there's any more details which we need to go into that.
Any, any further discussion or questions on this?
No.
Again, just correcting language for the grant. It was a pure correction.
One question. Is it okay to ask if the, if, is it coming through town funding, or would this be part of the Stratford High School project?
So, it was put in that Stratford High project, so it would come out of, come out of that. The reimbursements and the UI credits and the way everything is going to meld together into one pot is really what the state wanted to, wanted to see. So, everything still remains the same as it was presented by Rob Clea and Alan Seavis when they came September, was it, when they had this last on the agenda? But when we went through the process of the state, this, they flagged the language. And if you remember correctly, we passed multiple solar projects all at the same time. This was pulled out because it was going through the school construction.
All good? Okay, let's call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda is under new business. I'll entertain a motion on item 7.1.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poissons.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item 7.1, the STV Group of New York, New York Amendment to their contract dated 11/2/2021, in a not-to-exceed amount of $6,000 for a Circle Drive right-of-way proposal.
Motion by Councilor Poissons. Do I have a second?
I'd like to make a second.
I have a second by Councilman Connor. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda is item 7.2. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Brien.
7.2, I move to consider and act upon a referral to the Planning Commission for a review pursuant to CGS, GS 8-24, for the potential acquisition in lieu of taxes of a railroad spur near Long Beach Boulevard owned by American Premier Underwriters.
I have a motion by Councilor O'Brien. Do I have a second to that motion?
Ms. Dancho, I have on the second.
Any discussion on the item? Mr. Can.
It may be too early in the process, but is there potential economic value to the town for this property?
Madam Mayor? Any other discussion on the item? Nope. Okay. Madam Mayor, yes.
Counselor, there's probably going to be more information at the Economic Development Commission meeting after we move this forward.
And again, as it's stated on the agenda, this is voting to send it for an E24. All right, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda is item 7.3. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Brien.
7.3, I move to consider and act upon a signed settlement participation form, a copy of which has been previously provided to each council member.
Motion by Councilor O'Brien. Do I have a second?
Ms. Dancho, second.
I have a second by Councilwoman Dancho. Discussion. Attorney Hodgson, if you could just give the council a very, very brief summary of this.
All Connecticut towns must sign this participation agreement in order to participate in a national settlement with opioid distributors and the opioid manufacturer in 7.4.
So, in essence, this is the council voting to sign on to that.
Yes, we want your permission on the record. Thanks.
Thank you, Attorney Hodgson. Any discussion or further questions for Attorney Hodgson on that? Nope. Okay, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero. I'll entertain a motion for next item, 7.4.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilor O'Brien.
7.4, I move to consider and act upon a signed Jansen, in parentheses, settlement participation form, a copy of which has been previously provided to each council member.
Motion by Councilor O'Brien. Do I have a second to that?
Laura Dancho, second.
Second by Councilwoman Dancho. Any discussion? Mr. Can.
An explanation similar to what we received.
Attorney Hodgson, if you could.
Jansen was the manufacturer, also Johnson &amp; Johnson.
Of opioids?
Of the opioids.
So, one was a manufacturer, one was distributor, two suits.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion on the item? Nope. Call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero. Madam Mayor's made her appointments under her, so we will skip to the council committees. The first item is item 7.5.1.1 for beautification. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Dancho.
I motion to establish a beautification committee for the 2021-2023 session with the members as listed in the agenda.
Motion has been made by Councilwoman Dancho. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. O'Brien. Any discussion on the item?
Chairman.
Just again.
I'd like to offer an amendment.
Go ahead.
To replace Kim Rice with Lisette for the beautification.
As a council member, okay.
As a council member.
Motion to amend by Councilman Can. I need a second to that amendment, to the motion.
I'll second.
Second has been made by Councilwoman Sheik. Any discussion on the amendment? Okay, all those in favor of replacing Kim with Lisette, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero. Back to the original motion as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a total, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion, any, any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero. Also, being that the beautification, the chairs will be, as it has been for the last couple of years, co-chairs Donna Caserta and Christine Griffin. Next item on the agenda is 7.5.1.2 for BOE liaison. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Education is liaison Committee B and is hereby established, and those listed on the agenda will be the members for the 21 to 23 session.
Okay, motion's been, been made by Councilman O'Brien. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Can. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero. The chair will be Councilwoman Dancho. Next item on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poissons.
Be it resolved that a building needs Committee B and is hereby established and the following, as is listed on the agenda, would serve on said committee for the 2021-23 session.
Okay, motion has been made by Councilman Poissons. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I heard Mr. O'Brien first. Going with Bill. Second's been made by Mr. O'Brien. Discussion on the item? Nope. Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero. Chairman will be Councilman Poissons. Next item on the agenda is item 7.5.1.4 for ordinance. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Dancho.
I motion to establish an ordinance committee for the 2021-2023 session with the members as listed in the agenda.
Motion has been made by Councilwoman Dancho. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, second.
Mr. O'Brien, on second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero. Chair will be Councilwoman Dancho. Next item on the agenda is item 7.5.1.5 for public safety. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Sutton.
I'd like to make a motion to establish a public safety committee to be, is hereby established and follow, following be, and hereby appointed, wait a minute, hold on.
You could just read the resolved portion.
That public safety committee be and is hereby established and the following be, and hereby appointed to serve on said committee for the 2021-2023 session, the members as follows.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Sutton. Do I have a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Connor. Any, any discussion? Mr. Can.
Thank you, Chair. A motion to amend, replace as council member Greg Can with Kim Rice.
Motion's been, a motion to amend by Mr. Can. Do I have a second to the motion to amend? Seconded by Councilwoman Sheik. Any discussion on the amendment? No discussion on the amendment? Okay, we'll call for a vote for replacing Councilman Can with Councilwoman Rice. All those in favor of amending, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No. It'll be six, is it, motion, motion to amend fails, three to six. Back to the original motion as proposed. Any further discussion on the original motion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero. The chair of the committee will be Bill Perillo. Next item on the agenda is going to be item 7.5.1.6 for the Public Works. I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poissons.
Be it resolved that a Public Works Committee B and is hereby established and the following, as listed on the agenda, are appointed to serve on said committee for the 2021-23 session.
Motion by Councilor Poissons. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. O'Brien. Any discussion on the item? Mr. Can.
Thank you, Chairman. General question, is there a limit to the number of council members that can serve on the Public Works Committee?
Mr. Leclerc, I believe the answer is no, but can you, Town Attorney, confirm?
Yes, there's no. There's not even a threat. There's no. There's no. There's no limit in response to that question.
Go ahead, Ms. Can.
To add, in addition to the sustained council members listed, you have.
That's a motion to amend. Motion to amend by Councilman Can. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Councilwoman Sheik. Any discussion on the amendment as proposed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Brien, on the amendment, discussion only?
Yes, with an addition, what does that do to the quorum for a meeting?
Well, if you're going to have six members on it, you'll need four for a quorum. The only difficulty, obviously, with an even number of members is you can have tie votes.
Mr. Chairman.
So, discussion on this amendment?
Correct. Just for comparison, just correct me if I'm wrong, but from the last term of council, we had six town council members appointed to Public Works. This current appointment is only asking for five.
You're accurate.
Right? Okay.
Any, excuse me, any other discussion on the amendment? No? Okay, we'll call for a vote on the amendment. All those of a favor of amending and adding Councilman Can to the Public Works Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes no. Motion fails, three to six. Back to the original motion as proposed. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes nine zero. The chair will be Councilman Poissons. Next item on the agenda is going to be item 7.5.2. I'll entertain a motion of approval.
I would like to make a motion.
Ms. Sutton.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to establish an EMS funding committee with two-year term limits to expire December 11, 2023. Here resolved that council member Ms. Frenchazie and Ms. Sutton be and hereby appointed, and the following AMS fire.
Okay, motion by Counselwoman Sutton. Uh, do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Connor. Any discussion? No discussion? Okay, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes nine zero. Chair will be, uh, Counselwoman Sutton. Next item on the agenda is going to be item seven point five point three. I'll entertain a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I, uh,
Mr. O'Brien.
Move the Parks and Recreation Committee with a two-year term to expire December eleventh, twenty-twenty-three, with the members listed on the agenda.
Motion has been made by Counselor O'Brien. Do I have a second to the motion?
Laura Dancho, second.
Seconded by Counselwoman Dancho. Uh, any discussion on the item?
Chris.
Mr. Can.
Thank you, Chair. Um, is there a limit to the number of council members that can be appointed to this committee?
Mr. Leclerc? No.
Uh, an amendment?
Actually, hold on, Mr. Leclerc. Are you sure about that? Cause Ken was double checking.
I, I think it's two.
Uh, can I, hold on, I'm going to recognize Counselor Poissons.
I think it's two.
We'll cheer, we'll clarify.
It's two, two council members and seven members of the public and two alternates.
Through the chair.
Ms. Can.
A number of committees are not defined in the town code, in the charter per se. I'll use this as an example. Could, in a communication about membership rules, such as two plus seven from the, for, for the, for the committee and commissions, conservation, parks and rec being two examples, uh, through the chair, could we get a description of what the appointment rules are for those respective?
So, you're asking for a copy of the code?
It's not otherwise included in E code, town code, or town charter.
So, so if you're asking for specific questions about specific committees, Greg, I want to make sure I understand your question. And how it's related in the code. If you draft, we're voting on the parks and rec, but if you have specific, you can draft that up and we can get it clarified.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Connor.
Question for the attorneys, are these committees, are these basically resolutions that are for every single council and they basically go away unless they've been changed? So, I'm thinking that Ken is right, Counselman Poissons is right. So, the only way to change that would be to make another resolution, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Or not a resolution, you'd have to change the code by ordinance if it's a code-created, uh, border commission.
And, so, if I may, a number of commissions and committees are not defined in the town code.
So, let's just stay on this one, though, specifically. I'm not arguing with you, Greg. If you want to ask specific ones, I don't want to just go into generality of every commission, committee, I want to stay on topic. So.
Okay, the motion is to add Greg Can to replace Paul Taveras on the Parks and Recs Commission.
He's not on.
He was the former member.
He, he served.
As a, he served his term.
Which location would you like to add that on? He's not listed.
He's not proposed. He was on last, uh, term vis a vis his position on the town council.
Yes.
He was elected and elected, right.
He was an electorate.
But, anyway, his term is over.
So, he was an electorate member, not through the town council seat.
He, he was a, a member, doesn't matter how he was on it, he was a member, but the term of the committee is over, so you have to reappoint everyone.
Do the rules of the committee require a certain mix of Democrat, unaffiliated, Republican?
Well, that's minority representation is required on all of your boards and commissions, unless you're elected by district. For instance, this body, because you're elected by district, you can have all one party, there's no minority representation, uh, provision.
Do these appointments of the two counselors and the seven members of the public meet the criteria for minority res, uh, representation?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion on the item?
Mr. Chairman.
Counselwoman Shake.
Just for clarification, could you then, Attorney Leclerc, could you please define, um, minority representation?
Well, in, in this case, one party cannot, uh, you need to have a minority, it, it's by statute, the number of members of a border commission is to how many members of, maximum members you can have from one party, you have to put the other parties on, depending on the size, to have a minority representation. There's a state statute right on point with the number, telling you how many of the minority party must be there.
Any other discussion on the item? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agen, no, I'm listing a chair, correct? Yep. Um, item, next item on the agenda is going to be item seven point five point four. I'll entertain a motion. Mr. O'Brien.
Uh, I move that, um, Parks and Recreation Committee alternates serve a two-year term to expire December eleventh, twenty-twenty-three, and as listed on the agenda.
Motion's been made by Counselor, excuse me, Counselor O'Brien.
Second.
I have a second by Counselor Poissons. Do I have, uh, any discussion on this item? Nope, seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda is item seven point five point five. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make
Counselor Connor.
Seven council members pursuant, pursuant to the retirement plan for employees of Town of Stratford, resolve that Ms. Shake, Ms. Franczuski, Ms. Rice, Mr. Khan, Mr. Connor, Mr. O'Brien, Ms. Dancho be and are hereby appointed to the pension board.
Motion's been made by Counselman Connor. Do I have a second to the motion? Mr. O'Brien on the second. Any discussion on the item? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda is item seven point five point six. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Dancho.
I motion that the Planning Commission, Commission Alternates for three-year terms be established as follows, Brian Sturbis of Whipper Will Lane for a term expiring January twenty twenty-four, Tammy Lynn Morse of Nichols Avenue, replacing Deborah Lambertey with a term expiring January twenty twenty-three, and Danny Summ of Old Coach Lane, to the expired term of Carrie Widham with a term expiring January twenty twenty-five.
Motion's been made by Counselwoman Dancho. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counselman O'Brien. Any discussion on the item? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda is item seven point five point seven. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make
Mr. Connor.
I'd like to make a, a motion to place Beth DePonte of Broad Street be and certainly appointed a member of Stratford Housing and Story, expired term of Melissa Dempsey, with the term expiring June thirty of twenty twenty-six.
Motion has been made by Counselman Connor. Do I have a second to the motion? Mr. O'Brien. Any discussion on the item? Nope. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda is item seven point five point eight. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to
Mr. Connor.
I'd like to make a motion, um, to the attorneys, can I lump these all together, since they're all?
Yes.
Yes, you can, Mr. Connor.
Okay, so I'd make a, uh, first one, that Victoria Florck
Mr. Connor, uh, can you speak into the mic? It's just, it's off.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me now? Or should I take my mask off? That's, um, um, resolve that Victoria Florck of Victoria Lane be reappointed, uh, Janice Coopie of Elm Street be reappointed, Judy Clary of First Avenue be appointed, and that Dave Harden of Bruce Avenue be appointed. Recommend that all these people listed be appointed or reappointed.
Motion's, a motion has been made by Counselman Connor. Do I have a second to the motion? Mr. O'Brien on the second. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda is item seven point five point nine. Uh, this, under the code, is, uh, appointed by the chair for the Tax Partnership Screening Committee, it's a three-member, three council members are appointed by the council chair. I appoint, um, Mr. Pia, myself, Counselwoman Sutton, Counselwoman Dancho. Next item on the agenda is item seven point five point one, excuse me. Mr., Mr. Can.
Thank you, uh, apologizing. This is another one of the committees that's not following E code or the town charter.
It is. Yeah.
I apologize, but it does say that you have the numbers.
That's correct.
Next item on the agenda is going to be item seven point five point ten. Uh, I'll entertain a motion, excuse me, it's for informational purposes only, the, the WPCA, the Water Pollution Control Authority pursuant to item seven, one seventy-two dash ninety-eight of the Code of the Town of Stratford, the Town of Stratford is a WPCA authority, WPCA as authorized by Connecticut General Statute seven dash two four six shall be the town council. Next item on the agenda is item seven point five point eleven. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poissons.
I'd like it to be resolved that Alan Llewellyn of Huntington Road be appointed to the Zoning Board of Appeals for District Five.
Motion, uh, excuse me, motion has been made by Counselor Poissons. Do I have a second to the motion? Mr., uh, Mr. O'Brien. Uh, any discussion on the item? Nope. Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda is item seven point five point twelve. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion
Mr. Connor.
Uh, resolve that Judy Clary of First Avenue be, uh, appointed to the alternate member of, of the, oh, I'm sorry, reappointed to the ultimate, uh, zoning board of appeals.
Motion's been made by Counselman Connor. Do I have a second? Mr. O'Brien. Uh, any discussion on the item? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes nine zero. Next item on the agenda is going to be item seven point five point thirteen. I'll entertain a motion to
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to
Mr. O'Connor.
Point, uh, resolve that Christopher Solhavy of King Hickory Woods Lane be an appointed as an alternate of the zoning commission.
Motion's been made by Counselman Connor. Do I have a second to the motion? Seconded by Mr. O'Brien. Uh, do I have a, uh, any discussion on the item? No discussion? Okay, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes nine zero. The next item, uh, is going to be under confirmation of mayor role appointments. I'm sorry? We can't. They're, they're separate items. Yep. So, the mayor did read off, um, so I'll entertain the first being seven point five point fourteen point one.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Counselwoman Dancho.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda.
Go ahead, Ms. Dancho.
And the, the, um, amendment would be to add the confirmation of the mayor's additional appointees. The first to Booth Park Commission to add Maureen Millward, Richard Brown, Andrea Kawakami, Anna Scala, Louis DiCilio, Ann Minton, Raymond Bocola, and the alternate members are Frank Kecko, Paul DeVito, Adam Hossa, and Elliot Severn. To the Economic Development Commission to add Colin Kennedy, and to the Ethics Commission to add Charles Lindberg, moving from alternate to member filling the vacancy of Patricia Gallagher.
Okay, excuse me, motion to amend by Counselwoman Dancho. Do I have a second to the motion? Seconded by Mr. Can. Uh, any discussion on the amendment only? Again, the mayor did read off all the names under report, we're just adding these on for the agenda. No discussion on the amendment? Okay, we'll call the, a vote for the, to amend. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes nine zero. Back to the original motion of item seven point five point fourteen point one. I'll entertain that motion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Sutton.
I'd like to make a motion that the mayor's appointments to the Long Brook Park Commission as listed above be and hereby confirmed.
Okay, motion, uh, by Counselwoman Sutton. Do I have a second to the motion? Mr. O'Brien on the second. Uh, any discussion? Nope. Seeing none, we'll call for a vote.